Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, June 3rd, and we can go ahead and start our city commission meeting. We can go ahead and call the order, please.
Mayor Shirley.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
If we can all, those of us that can stand, if we can all stand and do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no words or proclamations today. This time, we can go ahead with our citizens. If anyone would like to approach the commission with anything that's not on the agenda, please feel free to approach. Nobody has anything today. All right, move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, continuation of public hearing and report on petition number 4353 requesting vacation of 30 feet of platted restricted access on Lot 3, Block 2 of the Riffle addition, plus the abutting vacated right-of-way to allow a right-in, right-out driveway opening on the west side of South Ninth Street.
Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This public hearing is carried over from your March 25th, 2013 meeting. That was before Commissioner Hardy and Commissioner Blanchard were seated on the commission. So I'll just give you a little bit of background as to how this request came about. When a plat or subdivision of a property comes before the city commission, there are items on there which are offered for dedications and acceptance by the governing body, and those include right-of-way for streets, easements for utilities, in some cases, an easement for a drainage or detention pond, and in cases of property that abuts a public street, sometimes access control or restricted access is dedicated. And what that means is that there is no, along this west boundary of the plat, there are no driveway openings permitted except where this one street intersection is. Similar to a request to vacate an alley or vacate an easement, a property owner may file a petition to vacate that restricted access, and that is what has resulted here, which was a petition filed by Premer Brothers Properties of Hutchison. They have purchased the former Popeyes Restaurant site that you see highlighted there and have requested a break in the restricted access to allow a right-in, right-out entry to their site. This started back in January of this year when they met with the city's development review team, and we explained to them that city staff would not be able to support a driveway that simply functioned as a driveway into an individual site. If you mentally drive up and down South Ninth Street, there are properties like Red Lobster, Pizza Hut, Applebee's, Bangles, places like that, none of which have their own individual driveway on Ninth Street. So we said that if you could come up with a plan whereby you could have a road that connects in some fashion to Riffle Drive mid, between Schilling and Riffle Drive, and get access over there, that would serve and benefit the entire area. That is something that staff could potentially support. We have had a couple plans submitted, none of which have met that mark, and this was continued over to today. In discussing this with Mr. Wasserman, he indicated that they're trying to involve potentially the owners of the Wendy's site and the Quick Shop site into a shared access road, and that those owners were unavailable to be at today's meeting. The first thought was to continue this for a week, which is what we have reported in your blue sheet. However, Mr. Wasserman now informs me that his preference would be to continue it to your June 17th meeting, and hopefully, at that time, we would have a full public hearing with all interested parties present and be able to have a vote on the merits of the proposal. But at this time, we think that allowing a continuance of the hearing to allow all interested parties to be here would be in the best interests of having a good decision. I reported to you that the request was to continue it to the 10th, and Mr. Wasserman's now indicated that the 17th would be their preference, and I'll let him make sure I've got the right date for his clients. But I'd be happy to address any questions you have about the report or what background information we have. When this comes back to you, there will be a little more detail than what you find here in terms of background and comparison to other sites, but with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Are you fairly certain that if we continue the hearing to the 17th, that that would be the absolute last date that we could continue, would hear this subject?
That would be up to you. If what we have attempted to do is continue this to try to get a refined plan that would actually result in a road that served multiple properties and not just this lot, if we can't come to that, or you conclude that we don't have a plan for that, then these other options here, which would include denial of the request and refiling at some future time, are certainly on the table.
So I was just curious about that. Would we be better off just saying, "Okay, let's just give them six months"? Commissioner Householder mentioned that one other time to me. And by then, you know, they might really have their act together.
Well, that it's, once petition's filed, your choices are to continue the hearing. It's just if we continue it, we have to continue it to a date. Just, we started with a January public hearing, and then it was continued to March 25th. It's been continued from March 25th to today, and would be continued to the 17th, and you would certainly have the option of continuing it again or taking some final action on it.
Well, I have a quick question, and that is, and it's kind of in regard to Commissioner Hardy's, and that is, on your, when it was continued to March 25th, one of the requests that you had was that the applicant would have drawings to you and your department by March 11th for March 25th, about a two-week, a two-week period prior to...
Right, to allow us to review those and include an analysis in our report.
Right. Now, since, since the continuing this to the 17th would essentially be two weeks from today, do you have any drawings that you can review and give recommendations on at this point?
I have not. Since the initial drawing submitted with the initial petition, staff has not received any revised drawings. I think Mr. Wasserman would be the best one to ask about the status of those. What we've included in your packet is the one and only drawing that we received, and we've not had a revised design since that time.
And you need two, you would prefer to have two weeks to be able to provide us with a...
We can do it in one if we had to, but to allow the various departments to review it and fully prepare a good report for you, two weeks would be ideal.
All right. Thank you.
But I would let Mr. Wasserman update you on the status of designs. If there are any other questions, I'll, I'll let you speak with Mr. Wasserman.
Yeah, I was referring to Commissioner Blanchard here.
Pardon me?
I was referring to you, not me.
Oh, okay.
I saw him scratching his head.
So does Mr. Wasserman have anything he'd like to add? Kind of update us on exactly what's going on in their status?
For one thing, the plan has changed considerably since the 11th, and when we were doing those drawings, the concept was a traffic way across the lot. So there was a lot of street design and that kind of thing involved.
Correct.
Now, we're talking about more in the nature of an access from the parking lot and creating a frontage road into Wendy's and then on into the Quick Shop. That actually is a lot less of a design problem, so that won't be hard to do. It'll just be a matter of dedicating some easements and jumping through the legal hoops, and then those connecting links will be built as the development progresses. So that's a little different than what we were talking about on the 11th, and that'll make this easier to do much more quickly than what we were originally talking about.
And, Mr. Wasserman, when, when would you anticipate that you might be able to have exhibits and drawings and a package to the planning staff?
I'm thinking we could have everything to Dean that he needs by the first of next week. On the other hand, if you would like to set a date beyond the 17th, as long as we could call it earlier if we were ready to go, that's also an option. That's, that's in your hands.
Right, because we don't want to keep continuing this and continuing this.
I understand.
We want to give them as much time as they need.
I understand.
And not, and not waste their time making them keep coming back and coming back.
Sure.
So you, you're confident that they'll have it ready here in the next...
I am.
...two weeks?
I am. But as I say, if you'd be more comfortable continuing it to a date in July or August, as long as we had everything to Dean and we could agree on an earlier date, that would be fine.
Mayor, if I may, and Mr. Wasserman, the only dilemma we have is that we are in the process of continuing the hearing. It is necessary to be to a date certain.
Okay. Then let's do the 17th.
And, I don't know, do we want to end the public part and then have a discussion, or what? I don't know that, I don't have another question for Mr. Wasserman and the rest of staff and some of you.
I'll refer to Mr. Bingsden on this.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a quick note. Again, we do have to keep that public hearing alive, so I think...
Well, I just meant the public input portion of...
Oh, I'm sorry. Just, yeah, just so we don't terminate the public hearing.
Right.
Keep it, keep it going.
Sorry.
So even with the continuance, we can still get public comment?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the purpose of this, sustaining the public hearing so that anyone who might wish to comment would be aware of when it was going to be considered.
Right, right. Is there anyone besides Mr. Wasserman from the company here that would like to come and speak?
No, I'm, I'm the only one.
Okay, I didn't know if, if Gil was here or any of those other guys.
No.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions from anyone out in the audience that would like to ask on this matter? CNN, I'll bring it back to the commissioners and try to get a date set.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. I, I'm uncomfortable with the 17th, just because I'd like to give staff two weeks to, to review this, so I'd say at the very earliest, the 24th, if, if it's decided that a continuance is in order. One quest, one question that I have maybe of counsel is, is there a point at which, if the plan changes substantially, that the application really is a different application versus what was originally, I mean, we're continuing on something that apparently isn't still the plan. So at what point does the application die because it changes?
That's a good point. I think as a practical matter, Mr. Andrews is probably in a better position to comment substantively on when, if and when we believe we're close to that line.
I don't foresee the fundamentals that are in the petition changing. I don't think the location is going to change. I don't think the width is going to change. I don't think the right-in, right-out nature is going to change. The only thing that is going to change is, once it gets from the right-of-way over into the private property, where it's, where it's going to go. So what, what you're seeing here looks just like a straight road going over. However, what it doesn't show you is, is the plans for the other improvements on the property, putting up a building, parking spaces, all of that. I don't foresee this part right here changing. It's going to be in that location. It's going to be right-in, right-out. There's going to have to be a ditch crossed, and then what happens from where it gets to the private property, what happens there, that's what's going to change, but not the actual location on Ninth Street, or the design, or the width. It's what happens on the private side that's been changing, not, not the location on Ninth Street. So I think the petition is still accurate.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Well, you know, just in, as a general point of order, I just, I tell you why it's, it's frustrating a little bit that, that since January, it kind of keeps coming back and back, and I think if it had been denied and asked to come back in six months, or six months would already be up. And I think, you know, the requirements in the ordinance are pretty straightforward about submittals that need to be made and things that constitute a completed application, and it just doesn't sound like there's even a complete application. So I'm inclined to say I'm not really supportive of continuing this very long, just because I think it sends the wrong message that just come in with a half-done package and we'll keep continuing it, but I would say...
From what I've read and understood, that it looks like a lease issue is what they're waiting on in their old building, so I think that, I might be misspeaking, but just from reading it and knowing the history of the last several months, is they were kind of waiting on that.
And I can appreciate that. And I have been to the other two meetings as well, and I know there was quite a bit of information at the January 28th meeting, and then the other one was just an extension. But anyways, having said all that, I, I would, I'd be willing to do something to the 24th, and that being that they would commit to having something, the planning staff, by the 10th, so that it gives them the two weeks to review that. Anything beyond that, I would just say, deny it and come back in six months when everything's ready, and so on. That's my two cents.
More like three.
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
I was gonna say, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to turn that into a formal motion, I'll second that. That sounded good.
Okay. Give me a second here. That would be, I think that's number four, then? That'd be right. Option number four. I move that we continue the public hearing on this petition to June 24th, 2013, to allow additional information or options to be provided by staff or the petitioner.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor to continue to the 24th?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Wasserman, we'll see you again in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 20th, 2013. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase of one inline solids meter at the wastewater treatment plant from HK Instrument Systems in the amount of $16,500.
Is there anything that a commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to amend the minutes.
You notice I looked at you.
Page, page three, the paragraph that starts with the discussion followed, that last full line says "A not" should just mean "not".
We have a, a motion to amend the wording on that. Do I have a second?
Are we just adding a space?
No, I think we're removing the "A". Removing the "A".
Right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the consent agenda. All opposed and favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I think they're just trying to test me.
I think they are too. They know it drives you crazy.
Anybody who doesn't think you read your packet.
He reads his, he reads his packets. Thank you, we appreciate that.
Well, then I'll make a motion that, did we approve the minutes, or just the, just changing the minutes?
Just changing the minutes.
Okay, then we need to...
I need a motion.
I, I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consent agenda is five zero. Onto development business.
Item 7.1, authorize the mayor to sign the airport industrial center subdivision number four plat and accept the utility easement dedications.
Mr. Andrews again.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We had just talked about subdivision plats and your role of accepting dedications, and the Slayna Airport Authority is repackaging some property that's at the west, the west end of Vortex Avenue, west of Scanlon Avenue. What you see with this, this area here, it doesn't show up because the aerial photo's too dated, but there's a FedEx facility right here. They did not use this entire platted lot. They left this balance behind, and the airport authority is, is repackaging those lots at the west end there, and there formerly was a 12-inch water line that more or less bisected this lot that has been relocated over to here to go around the outside of that, and the proposal here is to create two platted lots there at the west end of Vortex Avenue. You have in your packet some of the earlier plats, and a, and a couple of them, the original concept had a taxiway, which, which shows up right here, that was designed to support aviation nature units, and those are now been eliminated, and so the, the plan here for this subdivision is primarily a general industrial park and not, not tying it into the airport runway or taxiway. So we're looking at a redrawing of interior lot lines. The taxiway that we formerly had there has been deleted. The 12-inch water line has been removed. In this particular subdivision, the drainage analysis is done on a project-by-project basis when a building permit comes in, and those things were, will still hold. The only thing that was added in the way of a new dedication will be right here, will be a new 30-foot easement, and the plan is that there will be a water line extended from here up through this easement and tying into the existing line there, and that will provide water and fire protection for these remaining lots. The planning commission reviewed and approved this replat at their May 7th meeting, and we believe it's in order for city commission action. If you concur with the planning commission's approval, a motion should be made to authorize the mayor to sign the plat and accept the new utility easement dedications on behalf of the city. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address those. Also, Tim Rogers with the airport authority is here, if you have any specific questions of him.
Any questions for staff?
Basically, this is just cleaning up lot lines at the west edge there.
No questions for staff? Any public comment on this one? No staff and no public comment? Wow. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we authorize the mayor to sign the plat and accept the utility easement dedications on behalf of the city.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero. Onto administration.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 13-10,698, amending chapter 25, article 8, section 25, 141 of the Slayna Code pertaining to harassment by telecommunication device.
Mr. Getty.
Commissioners, while Mr. Getty comes up, in his absence, I helped to complete this, and you'll see on recommended action and on your agenda, it talks about an emergency exists. That's a computer copy and paste typo on my part. There's no emergency, so just let you know, you can just do a typical first reading.
Maybe, maybe Commissioner can help you with some of those typos.
Yeah.
Randall did catch that one.
Yeah, Randall, yeah, he was all over that. Yeah.
With that being said, I'll move into my comments. I think the title in itself addresses much of the issues. Currently, our ordinance 25-141 deals with harassment by telephone. As many of you realize, of course, with the devices you have in your pocket today, that's a rather antiquated term, and frankly, this ordinance has not been amended since 1991, which according to my memory, may even precede cell phones being generally used. And so, the staff, city manager, myself, Chief Hill, were approached by Ellen Mitchell of the county attorney's office, requesting that we look at our ordinance currently. I had identified to the police department a concern that we could not prosecute currently many forms of electronic harassment that are ongoing unfortunately in our community. I think we've seen an increase of those unfortunately with, with the additions of texting, email. It's a very quick way to unfortunately communicate ill will or threatening or harassing messages to others, particularly with the proliferation that we've seen on modern forms of media such as texting, Twitter, email, other forms of communication that my children probably understand better than I do. And so Ellen Mitchell requested that we assume prosecution of those cases after further discussions with her regarding inquisitions and some other matters. We essentially recommend the adoption of the language that's included in the proposed ordinance. That would essentially mirror the Kansas statute 216206, which is likewise titled harassment by telecommunication device. I would note of the subsections that are included for recommendation for adoption, most of ours involve incidences where someone intends to threaten or harass someone. That's the primary types of cases I see currently. I still prosecute quite a few of these cases where there's been a violation of a protective order, such as texting someone, and that's the anticipated area I would see most of these cases coming over from Ms. Mitchell's office. As noted, currently, Chief Hill's staff have to send these cases to the county attorney's office for prosecution, and given their great caseload and limited resources, they've requested that we assume prosecution over any type of harassment case that would involve electronic devices. And the state statute is fairly broad. It talks about electronic communication services. This is essentially any type of communication that's done electronically through some form of business, and it should cover most forms of harassment or threatening text emails that we encounter oftentimes in these cases that are forwarded for prosecution. With those comments, open for questions.
So if somebody is harassing you, what kind of charge would that be? Because I know back before text messaging, if you would call someone and threaten them, I think it was a terroristic threat, would it be the same kind of charge if you're threatening someone via text?
Terroristic threat or criminal threat is actually a felony. That's typically in a case where you're threatening somebody with great bodily harm...
Right.
...injury or death.
Right.
That would still be a felony. In addition to that, they could be charged with misdemeanor offense as well under this statute. That type of case would be forwarded to the county attorney's office. These would be lesser offenses typically where there's some type of intimidatory intent or harassment, but they don't rise to the level of actually making a threat in that regard.
I think we should be harder on text messaging and social media, because it is so easy to do that and threaten people and bully people, especially with your teenagers and your young adults. I think it's something that definitely needs to, definitely needs to be done.
Yeah, and I've certainly encountered that again looking at many cases with violations of protective order...
Right, right.
...where there's a multiple litany of threatening...
You can't get close to them, but you can text them.
And they leave their trail behind electronically when they do that.
Uh, question.
This is a tornado warning. Please seek safety in the designated shelter areas.
I doubt it. Are we safe? Get under the desk? Yeah. In lieu of Jason checking this out.
Please seek safety in the designated shelter areas.
I think we're about as safe as we could get here, aren't we?
Oh, Mr. Getty, would this be, what, what happens in case with, there's so many times where there's no... There's no name, or you don't... there's no name or you don't know where it came from? I've gotten a few of those myself.
Yeah, and that is a problem.
Can you follow that back?
Yeah, that is a problem that we discussed with Ms. Mitchell's office. Oftentimes, because someone may set up a false email account, some type of anonymous starting point to work with, her office is approached by the Salina Police Department to send inquisitions to various internet providers, email account providers, so they can attempt to trace down the source of that.
Because they can track down that IP address.
Yes, the IP number. When we spoke with Ms. Mitchell, one of my concerns, having been a deputy county attorney previously in Riley County, was whether this would be the best form to prosecute those. I think we're going to look at those on a case basis. But it is a concern, and in particular, if you're having to get an IP address provider from another state to come in and testify that this particular individual set up this account that was threatening or abusive, it can be an evidentiary issue.
It can be done, though. I mean, they can.
Yes, yes.
So Salina posting KSL link are going to be like hotbeds of criminal activity? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if Ms. Mitchell wants to engage in inquisitional process, I guess it could be.
Yeah, this seems like it could get pretty expensive. Has there been much of a problem with the vagueness? This law seems awfully vague. And I'm wondering if there's been challenges at the state level. I mean, I agree with the mayor. It's important that we do offer this protection.
Especially the text message.
But it seems awfully, this seems quite challengeable here. And I just wonder what we're, if we're hoping ourselves up to.
Yes, there's goodness, probably several pages of cases that have gone into interpreting what something such as harass, threatening, and those statutory-based cases would be applicable to our ordinance as well since it's mirrored off.
Yeah, because I'd like to have my girlfriend arrested for, because the threat she makes if I don't vacuum the house is.
Right. And I would say in addition, there's a degree of prosecutorial discretion.
Oh dang it.
Looking at matters to say whether this is a true harassment.
No, I don't mean to make light. This is a serious issue. But I wondered if, it seems awfully vague, and I'm just curious if, is this pretty much word for word what the KSA 216206 is?
It is. In terms of the initial provision, there's an additional provision or two that deal with other matters involving Kansas courts that frankly, if it involved a municipal court, probably wouldn't be appropriate for us to charge through our court to allow district court to handle that case. So yes. Any other questions?
How many cases do you estimate would fall under this statute?
That's a good question. I wonder if Chief Hill has an estimation.
One a month?
Oh, there's more.
One a day, yeah.
There has to be a lot.
More than that. I think probably 25, 30 cases probably get reported in this area.
But it's not an unmanageable load for us to handle?
No. I think these certainly can be prosecuted. Many times, they're fairly self-evident cases. It may be a text message that sent. The victim can identify the telephone number. They'll take a photograph of those texts for purposes of prosecution. And in many cases, they may contact the perpetrator and they may admit to sending those. The cases I'm more concerned about is if we get into the position of having to subpoena out-of-state business record providers in terms of the financial costs there. And they're not always the most open to appearing in court and providing that. And those may be the type of cases occasionally I need to approach Ellen Mitchell on to see if they can bring the authority from a district court subpoena. So, yes.
The good thing about this, though, is you will get a couple that get prosecuted. And that kind of sends a message out to the rest of the community. You know, it's, you can't be doing this.
Correct.
You know, and set the example.
And again, as you know, Mayor, I think it's so quick anymore for people to send these types of things versus actually writing a letter or calling, that oftentimes it is done unfortunately. And it's a criminal offense. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
No more questions for staff? Do we have any public comment on this matter?
My name is Tracy Sin. I live on 340 and a half, South Connecticut. And thank you, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners, for taking your time to listen to some of us. A few weeks ago, I had a neighbor that has about three dogs came over to my property. And the man came over to my property harassing me, calling me all kinds of names, you name it, in the dictionary of virgality and vile. I wish that you would put this into the laws so that way. I called the police on it, but they didn't do much about it at all. I might as not use the Police Department anymore because they're useless in Salina. I'll take care of myself next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If there was no other public comment, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 13-10698 on first reading.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Item eight point two, resolution number 13-7009, adopting the Salina and Celine County Economic Development Steering Council 2013 priorities.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in 2007, the city, Celine County, and the Salina Airport Authority approved what at that time was called the New Economic Development Strategic Plan. The intent at that time was to develop some specific strategies and tasks to assist the agencies, and particularly the Chamber of Commerce, who contracts with each of the agencies for economic development services. The end result was to create and stimulate private sector capital investment in the city and Celine County. Over the last year, many government officials and other business persons have worked at the request of the chamber to help put together a new plan, a more updated plan. They have used a process which was described in a study session recently. Some aspects have leaned, an organizational aspect and accountability aspects to basically bring some discipline and accountability to the process and create a focus on outcomes. The plan, which is now referred to as the Salina and Celine County Economic Development Steering Council 2013 priorities, includes the following components. It has an emphasis on quality jobs and premier jobs. That's something we didn't have before. And that will prompt you at some point to approve a policy that defines specifically what those are. There's a description in the plan. The plan is not a binding document by any means. So as we think of policies that complement certain aspects of the plan, that will be included as part of those policies. But the emphasis of that is to focus on jobs that have good quality pay and decent benefits. And to differentiate quality jobs which are acceptable, if you think about incentives or anything like that, and then premier jobs which are, you know, the higher tier. That should hopefully help all the decision makers when they look at how do we address this potential business prospect. The plan includes a section on branding and marketing, looking at what's a bit of an exploratory approach, exploratory approach regarding branding of the community and the various entities in the community to those folks, both probably inside but mostly outside of our community. A section on protecting and increasing the economic impact of the military. Emphasis on breakthrough project or projects that stimulate rapid growth. What are some big things, some big ideas you can do in this community to move things forward. Cultivate future community leadership. I'll talk about that one just a little bit more in a couple of minutes. Addresses economic development incentives, financing, and fundraising. The financing and fundraising is more of a private sector endowment model, much different than models that have occurred in the past. It'd be interesting, and I hope and I think that we'll see a positive response to that. We have seen positive response in Salina to endowment models for things that are important to the public. And that is much broader than just pure economic development. It's more about community development and moving a community forward. A section on removing roadblocks to growth. It could be anything from just resources that a business doesn't have that they need to move forward. Could be regulatory. It could be a lot of different things. Being a Kansas work-ready community and region, existing business growth and retention and infrastructure development. For each of those components, the plan provides for a general problem statement, a project scope, a deliverable target improvement concept, and the contribution to economic development. They also incorporate a list of those who worked on that as part of the overall steering committee. Really, the change in this, this is much different. The last plan you had was many, many pages. That was just the executive version of it, the executive draft version of it. This one's much shorter and more complete. This one really prompts an emphasis on topics, recognizing there's a lot of work to be accomplished towards those topics, and a lot of things that would be brought to you and the other governing bodies regarding those topics, such as incentives and infrastructure and all the other things in there. So a lot of items will come back to you with regards to this plan as the work on the items continues. As I mentioned, the components of the plan were recently discussed with you during a study session. We did add the infrastructure development component, which is an emphasis on really analyzing from a shovel-ready perspective, what are those particular properties that are most marketable to business prospects? What needs to occur to make those properties ready or as close to ready as reasonably possible? And so a lot of work has already occurred with regards to that. That was a component that was just inadvertently left out during, prior to the study session. The component cultivate future community leadership, that's one which prior had in writing more of a political emphasis. I'm not sure that was the practical emphasis, but nonetheless, it's been completely rewritten to really emphasize community leadership development and encouragement for people to be involved in leadership. And that could be as simple as a, you know, volunteering for the, you know, annual or biannual cleanup day to start off with, to get used to volunteering time, serving on a committee. Could be nonprofit, could be government, doesn't really matter. You know, getting involved in boards, taking advantage of training that's offered in the community and so forth. So the whole emphasis is completely away from anything that's political in nature and more towards just creating leaders in our community and allowing and encouraging those leaders to apply themselves in any way that's out there. So that's completely changed from what it was before. From a fiscal perspective, the plan itself really doesn't have any fiscal impact. It doesn't even really bind you. It's a guide that says, we want you to focus on these areas of emphasis in the next year, two years, three years. It's up to you. It could be changed in a year, it could be changed in a week. You know, it just depends if we, and you see a different direction you want to go, it could be changed. So there's nothing that locks you into anything. It doesn't change the contractual relationship we have with the Chamber of Commerce either. Again, it's just a general direction. So as a result, it doesn't really have a direct fiscal impact. Now, there may be some decisions along the way that do have a fiscal impact. And those would obviously be brought to you for discussion probably. And most of them would be in study session first, formal action out here. And if there's a price tag to those, it'll be highlighted under the fiscal note. So you'll get to see that as those would come forward to you. And as I mentioned, the document has been shared previously. Celine County has a copy and they'll be asked to act on it, the Salina Airport Authority as well. And in certain aspects of it, we'll be talking to some of the other taxing entities as well when we work towards some of the tasks that would affect them. From a conformance with the comprehensive plan perspective, really goal one is the primary goal that it would address. City will create a community of mixed-use quality development and redevelopment. And when you really look at that specifically, you break this down, you focus on the financing strategies, land readiness and development, provision of adequate infrastructure. Those are some of the key things that really come out of that goal of the comprehensive plan. We have three alternatives, ones to adopt it as is, ones to adopt with changes, that you'd agree on, ones to not adopt at all. Be happy to take any questions. Mr. Lover's not here. He's tied up with other work-related obligations. So I'll be happy to take the questions. And I think I should be able to field just about anything you can throw at me, so.
Any questions for Mr. Gage?
Not really a question, just more comment that maybe for the people at home who weren't able to attend the meeting. We discussed with some really great people working on these items that came in and spoke to us. Some real leaders in our community have been a part of this. You know, bank personnel and a lot of, I mean, a lot of really good thinkers involved. I really like the the seed money aspect of this and really encourage people who would normally be involved in this to look this plan over. I mean, this really is the future of Salina right here. So I really would encourage the public to get involved and learn about these items themselves.
Any public comment on this one? See no public comment.
The only thing that I had, just a comment on expanding the pipeline of qualified and principled candidates for local leadership positions. And we really need to do that. I'm still just a little bit concerned about that particular, it doesn't mention political, but just that the leaders of that are the area, Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. And hopefully, hopefully, we can get some candidates for local leadership positions. I'm just, I guess I'm.
Yeah, I tell you, if this is the last, these last two commissioners are anything to go by.
I guess I'm still a little bit.
No comment on that, but just to comment on the rewrite, I think it was a really good rewrite.
Yeah.
The first one was, I know I was ready to say just remove the whole section. So this is not only a lot stronger, but I think it actually makes the whole document much stronger, which is kind of one of the concerns I have of the overall thing. But I think you addressed it earlier in that it's sort of a malleable document that we can add, change, whatever. And I like that because it does seem a bit vague. And I'm not quite sure where priorities are, what some of the costs may be of some of those individual items as they come up, such as the seed aspect of this and so on. It's a great, it's a great plan, but there is, on that one in particular, probably a good amount of cost that might come along with that.
Yeah, if I could, Commissioner, real quick on the seed, I can give you about a 30-second primer on that, I think. The intent of that, as I mentioned, is an endowment-type intent to bring dollars from the community, not necessarily the city, although the city could say we like where it's going. And at some point, when it's ready for prime time, it's not quite ready, but when it's ready for prime time, you could choose to donate into that. The thing about the seed initiative is, is in order to have an endowment, there's certain tax laws. And what that means is, is that the funds can only be used for certain things. And there are limitations, such as if someone said, well, we'd like to provide an incentive to a particular person or business, the seed couldn't do that, but the seed could assist with infrastructure or something that has a public benefit. So the seed is a totally different concept than what we've seen before. And it's truly a community development concept. And that's the beauty of it, and it leverages resources over a long period of time in an endowment form from our community. And so when it's finished, you will probably look at that and say, we'd like to be a contributor to that. We need to get it finished and have you take a look and decide at that time. But it doesn't, in essence, obligate us to funding in the future. It's really a community leveraging tool.
And then I'll just make this last comment and move it along. But it kind of touched on what you were mentioning is, I think it's kind of our duty up here to make sure that the two points of accountability and the focus on outcomes that we kind of keep our eye on those two aspects of it. Because I think those are probably the two biggest parts of it is that we need to make sure that those are happening. Otherwise, I echo Commissioner Householder's compliment to the groups that came together to put together this document. They did a lot of work and it was certainly appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments? And I'll ask again comments from the public. Okay, CNN, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, then I'd move that we adopt resolution number 13-7009, a resolution adopting the Salina and Celine County Economic Development Steering Council 2013 priorities.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We will do, go on to eight point three.
Resolution number 13-7006, authorizing an application to be submitted to the Kansas Department of Transportation for use of safe routes to school federal funds and authorize the city managers to sign the application.
Mr. Stack, you got up here quickly.
Yes.
Goodness. Back from vacation?
Yes.
How was sunny California?
It's good. It's very busy there.
Thought you guys were going fishing.
Traffic issues in California.
It's terrible. I'm from that area, so I understand. I, I'm from that area, so I understand.
Light, interconnection, traffic signal timings.
Timing, yeah. Is that what you guys went fishing? I thought your dad said you guys were going fishing. That was a month ago?
A month ago.
It was like constant vacation with you guys. Yeah.
Been here almost five years. I'm almost going to get three weeks here.
Yeah.
Actually not.
Do it all at once.
Only two more days.
Only two more days. There you go.
All right. This is a, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is getting to be an annual request for safe routes to school funding. The school district and the city have looked at this for the past three or four years to try to add trails and sidewalks to some of the schools and some of the areas around town where I feel like it would be a benefit to have, make it more pedestrian-friendly, more walkable. And KDOT started doing this with federal funds in the early, oh, 2007, 2008 was when the city actually received a little bit of money to do a planning grant. So, since then, the, the funding has been sketchy, but the last couple of years, we've requested this Lakewood Trail here that we're going to talk about. So, now, it's, it's called MAP 21. That's the federal program that actually funds the Safe Routes to School program. Money's given to the states, and the state divvies it out through KDOT to, after application process and a grant process. We were unsuccessful last year, but feel like it's still a good program, a good project, and now, it's a 20% match, and so, they're asking us to put a little skin in the game. So, feel like that also is a, feel like it gives us a bonus or benefit that Salina's got a good application, and they are willing to put some money in here, so we feel like it's still a good, a good project. In the past, it's spend free money, so everybody submits. So, we feel like sometimes the application process was pretty easy. Now, it's got to put some money in there as well, so hopefully, it's, it gives us a better chance to get some funding for this project. It's kind of a long blue sheet. The program's very detailed, but the bottom line is, this is a Lakewood Middle School walking trail. It's right along the Smoky Hill River. The application discusses the costs of that and the education, the enforcement, encourage walking, education of making sure you walk to school, and trying to get kids to be able to access the school from the south. Right now, when you go to Lakewood, you can't really get there walking very easily from the south. You have to go onto the west side and through the bridge. You can get there from the east, but it's just, there's no, there's no, there's no sidewalk, there's no trail, so this will give us an opportunity from iron over the bridge to access Lakewood School along the, along the Smoky Hill River. It's part, this, this trail is consistent with the Smoky Hill River master plan of where trails would go, so that it's, it's a good benefit to the city and the school district if we could get this, get this grant. Let's see. The city has to be the sponsoring agency for this, so that's why the school district isn't doing it. The requirements of, of the program is that the city or county has to be the sponsoring agency for the actual application, and so, basically, that's why we're asking, asking for it, to be sponsored by us with a local match required by us, that we've planned to split with the school district. The school district did meet last week and okayed that, as far as about $7,400 approximately per, per group, 10% apiece to, to match, and they're, they're on board with that. The city would have to get an easement from the school district, and they were okay with that. If we get the funding, they will grant us an easement for the actual Lakewood Trail. And, can I give anything else here to hit? It's part of our strategic plan, this area is, so I, we would ask that you adopt this resolution in support of this application, and we should hear back in the fall, early fall, I guess, to see if we were successful. If we're not this time, we'll have to reevaluate. Maybe it's just, there's not a good, see why it's not getting funded, because it seems like a very good, very good application. School district puts this together, and it's, you know, it's many pages. It's, it's not an easy application, so there's a lot of time spent by David Cooper with the school district to put this together, so we appreciate his efforts. Would entertain questions.
I, I think that trails are very important to a city and, and its well-being, and, you know, the, it's the first time I'd actually seen the master plan, and it's really a great thing that there are ways that we can help augment and enhance the money that we have by writing these grants, and so, I would applaud USD 305 in the city for thinking in terms of, you know, finding this, this extra money to help us move the plan along possibly quicker. And it's, it's beneficial for the kids, of course, which is, is great, but at some point, it's going to benefit everyone in Salina as these trails start to hook up. So, I, I'm very happy to see that.
Mr. Stack, when, if we are successful in, in receiving this grant, when would the construction of the trail happen?
The, if we are successful, then we have to actually sign an agreement with KDOT. We have to enter into an agreement, contract, so it's, it's a challenge to get those quickly, I guess. To be honest, it's happened in the fall, but I don't know if historically, they've been able to get you to, you know, in September, you get an agreement, you start construction in October. I don't know if that's possible. That's about the last month we can start before it gets cold, so.
Okay.
If not, it would have to happen in the spring of 2014 then.
Well, I also would echo Commissioner Hardy's comment about the, being an amenity that the, that is really good for the community.
Yes.
You know, we, our comprehensive plan mentions several times in there about connectivity, bicycle pedestrian safety, and I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, we hope we're successful this time.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 13-7006 for the city of Salina to submit an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for use of safe routes to school, federal funds, and authorize city managers to sign the application.
Second?
Hey, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Item 8.4, authorized supplemental agreement number three with HDR Engineering Incorporated for construction services for Phase One downtown wellfield improvements, project number 10-2840, an amount not to exceed $199,133.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to cover the main points of this supplemental agreement, and then, at the end of my report, Lori Hill with HDR, and I will address any questions that you may have. In August of 2010, the city commission authorized HDR Engineering Incorporated to design the Phase One downtown wellfield improvements. In general, that was to increase the drought-resistant water supply capacity for the city. This will be the first construction project out of what I call the raw water supply bible, so we're five years later, and we're now beginning the construction of the first project that was identified in here. So, Lori was involved with this document five years ago and has been working on the project since that time, so she's very familiar with the work that we've been doing. The improvements are divided into two separate contracts. Contract one increases the capacity of the downtown wellfield from 10 million gallons a day to 13 million gallons a day, and contract two increases the existing air stripping facility at the water treatment plant from 10 million gallons a day to 15 million gallons a day. The Phase One improvements are funded through the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund, and previously, when we spoke of that, for the $4 million project over the 20-year life of that loan, that's roughly a million dollar savings to us using their low-interest loan rate, so quite a benefit there. This supplemental agreement defines the construction services that HDR Engineering Incorporated will provide for both contracts number one and number two. In general, the construction services include a pre-construction conference, answering questions about the plans and specifications during the construction, periodic site visits as necessary, progress meetings, review of all of the shop drawings and submittals for the project, and substantial and final completion inspections and record drawings. In addition, it includes the services that are required by the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund requirements, which requires a, a plan of operation, O&amp;M manuals, and one year of ongoing services after the construction is complete, and then, an inspection at the end of that one year to ensure that everything is operating per the plans and specifications. The attached supplemental agreement estimated the total labor and expenses at $199,133, which is an amount that cannot be exceeded without city commission approval. The construction of both contracts are scheduled to be complete by May of 2014, and one year of ongoing support for the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund requirements by May of 2015. The attached supplemental agreement number three increases the fee to $428,233, which covers everything from the survey and design, construction services, and the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund requirements. Typically, when we look at an overall design fee, we will look for that fee, depending upon which phases of the work they supply from the survey, design, to construction services, anywhere from 8% to 15%. And what we're seeing with this project, if we subtract out the state revolving loan fund dollars, which is roughly $90,000, the overall design, survey, and construction is roughly $340,000, which is an 8% fee in comparison to construction, which is a very reasonable, probably on the low side of numbers for this type of work. The consultants agreement includes Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund contract provisions, which allows us to include engineering services in the loan agreement. The original agreement and supplemental agreement number one were funded by the 2010 capital improvements under the category of wastewater and water system enhancements. Supplemental agreements number two and three will be funded through the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. Staff has identified two options for the city commission. The first, authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement number three with HDR Engineering Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, for construction services for Phase One downtown wellfield improvements, project number 10-2840, with the not-to-exceed amount of $199,133. Revised estimated fee for the total project is $428,233. Option two is to not authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and give further direction to staff. At this time, Lori and I would be glad to address any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
How long a lifespan does this upgrade give us in terms of capacity?
The, this is the first of five phases.
Okay.
And each phase gives us a different level of capacity.
I'm, I'm talking about in terms of how many years in the future would these five phases, I guess, then?
If we complete all five phases, that takes us out to about 50 years, so from 2010 to 2060. And the first phase is the downtown wellfield. The second phase pertains to the south, what we call the, kind of a southeast side of the city, or the old Schilling Air Base wellfield. That's our second phase, which is a fairly large phase. It adds roughly 5 million gallons of capacity, then phases three, four, and five are, you know, very small phases that fall in over the next several years.
So, this phase would be good for the 50 years as well?
Yes, it's the beginning of the 50-year plan, so we incrementally decided where we could get the most bang for the buck. So, working with our existing wells and our existing infrastructure, for example, this project is roughly $4 million, and we're getting 3 MGD a capacity. When we move out to the south wellfield and look at a new treatment plant and wells in that area, we're getting 5 MGD for 20 million plus. So, that gives you an idea of kind of overall cost, if that helps. Then, the other phases are very small in dollars and capacity.
How long does construction take on this?
The construction will be complete by May of 2014, and there's, the two projects are separate mainly because it takes a different type of contractor...
Right, right.
...to do the pipe and that.
Different phases, different.
And we're, a lot of very specific construction requirements to when the wells can be in and out of service, also with the air strippers at the water plant, so we can meet our daily demands for water flow. So, there's a lot of effort that will be involved in the construction phase of this.
Any other questions for Ms. Tasker? Any public comment on this one? CNN, I'll bring that back to the commission.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement number three with HDR Engineering Incorporated of Kansas City, Missouri, for construction services for Phase One downtown wellfield improvements, project number 10-2840, with a, not to exceed an amount of $199,133. That's a revised estimated fee of $428,233.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five, zero on item 8.4.
Item 8.5, second reading ordinance number, or second reading of charter ordinance number 37, repelling charter ordinance 14 that exempted the city from provisions of KSA 41719 pertaining to consumption of alcoholic liquor in public places.
All right. Let's see. This was passed on our first reading on May 20th, 2013. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any questions from our commissioners to the staff pertaining this? Do we have any public comment on this one?
Okay.
Back to my commissioners.
Oh, I move that we adopt charter ordinance number 37 on second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, is that a roll call?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, so, yeah.
I almost said asked.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So, we'll do the roll call.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye. Still getting used to the whole ordinance roll call thing, thank you.
Yeah, that kind of threw me, too. I wasn't even thinking.
Yeah, I thought so.
Item 8.6, first reading on ordinance number 13-10699, amending chapter five, sections 518 and 567, to allow Sunday sales of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverage in their original package, and sale of alcoholic liquor on certain holidays in the original package.
Mr. Bankston?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have what is the amended version of the blue sheet on this item. The only change was that because the commission had requested that the item be prepared for your discussion today and public input, there is not a staff recommendation at this point in time associated with the matter. Also, when you asked that this be brought before you, I enlisted Jake Peterson of our firm to work on that matter, and would like to introduce Jake and ask him to present the item to you.
Okay. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Before I really get into the, to the weeds of the new ordinance, there's one distinction I want to make clear. You probably already realize this or have come across this, but within the state of Kansas and within the city code itself, alcoholic beverages are, are regulated in two separate categories. The first of which are cereal malt beverages, and as a general rough definition, those are alcoholic beverages with an alcoholic, or a percentage alcohol by weight of 3.2 or less. Those are also, those also are not any distilled alcoholic liquors. Alcoholic liquor, on the other hand, are all of those beverages that are above 3.2% alcohol, distilled beverages, that sort of thing. So, with that distinction in mind, I'd like to take you through the current status of retail sales of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages, and then compare those to what the proposed ordinance does. Currently, alcoholic liquor retail sales are not permitted on Sundays. Furthermore, they're not permitted on several holidays, including Memorial Day, Labor Day, Independence Day, Christmas, and Thanksgiving. Additionally, Easter sales are... Additionally, Easter sales are also prohibited by virtue of that Sunday prohibition. Under the new ordinance, however, Sunday sales would be permitted between the hours of 12 noon and 8:00 PM. Furthermore, alcoholic liquor retail sales would be permitted on Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. As far as cereal malt beverage retail sales go, they're currently prohibited on Sundays. And the only prohibited holiday currently is Easter, again, by virtue of that Sunday prohibition. Under the proposed ordinance, the hours would be expanded to include Sundays from the hours of 12 to 8:00. And then, again, the only holiday on which cereal malt beverage sales would be prohibited is Easter. Now, if you consider all of those expanded hours, days, and times with which alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverage retail sales can occur, all of those by statute are a package deal. If the commission, the statute allowing the commission to expand the hours of retail sales does not permit us to pick and choose. So for example, if the commission wanted to simply allow for retail sales of alcoholic liquor on Sunday, but wanted to keep the prohibition on Memorial Day, the statute doesn't permit that. It's all or nothing. Now, there are a couple other additions to the statute which are not associated, which are not part of that all or nothing deal that I want to cover with you. The first of which concerns current code section 570, 5-71. And this is getting a little bit more into the nuances of cereal malt beverage regulation. Essentially, what that section says is that if a business is licensed to sell cereal malt beverages on its premises, and additionally holds a license to sell alcoholic liquor on its premises, that that business would be permitted to sell cereal malt beverages at any time they can sell alcoholic liquor. The proposed ordinance doesn't modify that provision at all. It simply incorporates it into section 568 so as to make interpreting the cereal malt beverage regulation under the city code a little bit clearer. The second additional provision, which also is not part of the all or nothing Sunday sales provision, that deals with Sunday sales of cereal malt beverages on premises yet again. And mainly, that would impact businesses that don't hold a license to sell alcoholic liquor on their premises. What that provides is that says that a business which holds an on-premises cereal malt beverage license may sell cereal malt beverages on Sundays if their gross receipts, if the gross receipts they receive come at least 30 percent from sales of food. And again, that's another provision that's required by statute. The specific 30 percent gross receipts requirement is something that is mandated by statute. If the, if the commission does not wish to allow, or does not wish to adopt that amendment relating to cereal malt beverages on premises, then the only time cereal malt beverages would be able to be sold for consumption on premises on Sundays would be if a business establishment also had a license to sell alcoholic liquor on premises as well, by virtue of that exception I just covered. In terms of the procedure to adopt, this Sunday retail sales expansion is equally specific under statute. What it requires is two publications in the newspaper, after which the ordinance would not become effective for 60 days. And the purpose of that 60-day delay is to allow the citizens of Salina the opportunity to present the city with a petition that would place the issue as a referendum for the citizens of Salina. Upon being presented with such a petition, the city would be forced to call a special election within 45 days of receiving that petition unless there's a general election coming up in the 90 days after presentation. I believe that covers most of the, most if not all of the substance of the proposed provisions. I'd be happy to take any questions from the commission if they have any.
If this does pass, it's up to the individual business owner, though, to be open on Sunday. They're not, they don't have to be open?
No, that's correct.
Correct. Okay, just so we're clear on that.
Yep.
Because I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there that if it does pass, that they'll be forced to be open on Sunday. So I just want to make that clear, that they're not being forced to be open on Sunday.
No, no. We're certainly not requiring them to be open.
Right, right.
That's next week. And I should point out too, not really a question for yourself, that there was some question that a specific business brought this before us. To my knowledge, that was not the case. A couple of guys, I was speaking to one of the businesses who was, was, that someone had thought they were pushing this agenda, and it's, to my knowledge, at least for me personally, and I don't think from city side, there's any one agency pushing, or agency, any one business pushing this, be it the brewery, or liquor stores, or restaurants, or...
Yeah, I think I can speak to that probably most effectively. What brought it to city staff's attention was the interest in microbreweries and a recognition that our ordinance was not in sync with the state statutes. But as it relates to Sunday sales, and, you know, what you might have read in the paper recently, it was not advocated or requested by a particular brewery.
Right, because we kind of brought up the Sunday sales.
That was, I had an initial concern about that because I didn't want the microbrewery to have their hands tied behind their back on Sunday sales.
As staff met with, you know, prospective businesses and projects through our development review team process, there was a recognition that there was a need for a code update. And so there, from a code identification standpoint, we recognize that as an issue to be resolved. But Sunday sales, as you're now considering it, is not something that was advocated by either one of the breweries we've been working with.
And I do appreciate the list of cities that do sell on Sundays. That's included in our blue sheet here.
I appreciate your help on this, because I have a quick question, and I think you've already answered it, but if you maybe can make it, make it clear for me, maybe hearing it a second time. It has no effect, this change would have no effect on the 30 percent requirement of food? I mean, they wouldn't automatically now not have to serve any food?
Well, the 30 percent requirement, Commissioner, if I may, that relates to simply whether a business could serve cereal malt beverages for consumption on premises. Now, if a, if a business had an on-premises cereal malt beverage license, meaning that they could serve a cereal malt beverage to somebody's meal on a Sunday, they would not be able to, to provide a cereal malt beverage for on-premises consumption if they didn't have that 30 percent food sales threshold. Does that, does that answer your question?
Right, I'm just saying that it doesn't, that's still intact, that requirement?
I might jump in if I may, just...
Well, that's state ordinance, right?
Well, the phenomena is fairly limited, I would understand, and Ms. Elsie knows better than I. But the circumstances where we have anyone with strictly cereal malt beverage licensing for on-premises consumption is rather limited, am I correct? Most restaurants, as you think of them, will have a drinking establishment license, so they would not be affected. Am I correct that the only reason that that comes into play is that that cereal malt beverage license holder currently is, cannot sell on Sunday? And that the transition, under state law, opening that up so that they can on Sunday, happens to come with the food requirement? But that is the only circumstance under which the food requirement is at play?
Yes, that's the only circumstance under this ordinance where the food requirement is an issue.
So if you're a beer joint, you better serve hot dogs on Sunday, is what you're saying?
A lot of them.
A lot of hot dogs, 30 percent hot dogs. Pretzels.
They must have stayed up all night when they wrote all these.
Yeah.
Must have been drinking.
Yeah.
They stayed up for many, many years.
Yeah.
Over the history of Kansas law on alcoholic beverages.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter?
My name is Cord Kelly. I'm the brewer at Big John's Brewing Company. We're opening up on, at 2445 South Ninth Street. I like the sound of this ordinance for selling on Sundays because we're a drinking establishment, but we're also going to sell growlers, which is a 64-ounce sealed container for off-premise consumption. So this would definitely expand, you know, our days of revenue for our retail sales.
Cord, where are you from?
Castle Rock, Colorado.
Okay, so you just recently moved here to Salina?
Yes, moved here, right.
Well, good to have you in town.
Thanks.
Appreciate you.
Enjoying it so far.
Potentially remodeling that eyesore down there on South Ninth.
Yes, yes.
I'm really tired, we painted that.
Oh, you did, oh, you did. Oh, that's already making an improvement.
Wow.
Right, right. Yeah, we're looking forward to openings.
Good, good. Well, and the concept, again, maybe for the people at home who don't understand, because this is your own brew, there could be potential road travelers out and about Hayes or somewhere else just coming to our wonderful city and decide to stop in and try out this microbrewery and say, "We really like what you've got here. We'd like to take this sealed container home with us." If they happen to be traveling on Sunday, a reasonable day to be traveling, they couldn't do it under a current ordinance, and this would allow them to spend their money and generate revenue and take it home with them to tell all their friends, so they come to Salina.
Right, right. And a lot of beer enthusiasts, I've seen this in, you know, many states where they'll start at one end of the state and stop and taste, and then get growlers to go.
There you go. Hard to do on...
Should have brought a growler with you, I have no idea what that is.
It's a 64-ounce sealed container, it's just a jug. Come on in.
Adrian, when I don't do the dishes, that's what it is, that's a growler.
You're going to be doing food there as well?
No, this is just a strict microbrewery.
Okay, okay. What's your estimated opening date?
Well, that depends on the federal government and our brewers' notice.
Right.
Yes, whenever it's...
We're hoping for the next 60 to 90 days.
Wow.
But we are going to, you know, invite people to have food delivered, bring it in, you know, whether it's from another restaurant, or if it's their own home food, whatever.
So will you be doing, like, receptions or parties there as well?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to book one?
I like it.
And we have a signature snack, which is going to be a spiced popcorn.
Oh, okay.
So Big John grows and makes all his own spices, so...
He likes pretzels.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a beer fan, but I'll come eat your popcorn, that's for sure, yeah.
Well, we'll also have root beer and ginger ale.
Oh, that's, that's kind of beer I like, root beer.
Now, Mr. Kelly, your product, though, would be, it's actually a alcoholic beverage, it's not a cereal malt.
Yeah, it's not, it's not cereal malt.
Are you doing homemade root beer?
Yes.
Yes, I love homemade root beer.
Look at this, we're more excited about the root beer.
I'm really excited about the root beer.
You can buy it on Sunday as well.
Yeah, yeah, you can buy that on Sunday.
I can get that anytime.
Yeah, we can sell that on Sunday. So, yeah, we're also going to feature Kansas wine as well.
Okay.
Well, that was my wife's order.
There we go. Well, too bad she's not here today, you must have her over there painting.
No, I have her working on QuickBooks.
Oh, okay. Have her a dull moment. Well, good to have you on board, Cord, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments from the public? No public comments, and no more questions for staff?
I have a comment, though. I think this proposed ordinance is a win for the city of Salina, and I think it's a win for the local businesses in Salina that sell liquor. This will give them an opportunity to be open another day of the week, if they wish to, it's totally voluntary, but they have the option now.
Right.
We are no longer telling them they have to be closed. And so I think everybody wins with this ordinance.
I agree with you.
And with, with that, I would move that we approve ordinance number 13-10699.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
Item 8.7, second reading ordinance number 13, 10,697, amending chapter five, article two and four of the Salina Code by permitting microbreweries.
Back to Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just two quick points. This is, of course, a second reading. In order to not be presumptuous as to the outcome of your earlier discussion, we did not delete the section in this ordinance that would have adapted the Sunday limitations to our current ordinance. So if, I would expect, in order to be consistent with the action that you just took relative to Sunday sales, you might wish to amend this by deleting what is now section three. Section three is where we had put in the language to adapt to our current ordinance as relative to prohibiting Sunday sales. So with that, if it is your wish, consistent with your previous action, you would want to amend that by deleting section three. The other question I suppose to consider is whether you want these two ordinances to run in tandem in terms of the second readings, or if you wish, just to proceed today with this matter as it would relate to microbreweries. That's obviously your discretion, but just something we wanted to point out is something you might wish to consider. Assuming we would move to second reading at your next meeting on the ordinance that you just approved on first reading, it's simply a question of whether you want to defer second reading on this to coincide, or whether you're comfortable just going ahead and acting on the microbrewery ordinance on second reading today. That's obviously up to you.
Advantages of waiting and doing together?
I think it's all rather academic, just whatever you prefer.
We changed our mind by next week on the one we just passed, there could be an issue with this, it'd be the only issue, but I, with a strong five, I doubt that's...
That's correct. If we were, we didn't know, we didn't want to presume which vote would be, but if it was a split vote with, I'm not sure, in there, then we'd say it's probably a good idea to move this out, but when you usually have unanimous vote, it doesn't typically change, so that you don't have a lot of risk in that case of having these mismatch with each other.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this one? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 13-10697 on second reading, striking out section three in its entirety, I believe, that's all of it, yeah?
That's correct.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second reading, right?
Yes.
Adopt on second reading, ordinance number 13, 10697, we had a motion and a second. Now, all those in favor? No, this isn't a roll.
It's not called a roll, is it?
No.
Second reading?
Yes, yes, this would be the second reading.
Darn it.
Yes.
It's a crap. Snake eyes.
That was called my T-shirt.
Well, it's, it was confusing to start with, and I probably even confused it more. We are, if you're considering it today, it is second reading.
Yeah.
You did pass it on first reading last week, so...
Right, okay, so we're passing it on the second reading if we get all, on the roll call, if we get the roll call.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye, I'm real excited about this one.
Yeah.
Got ahead of myself there. All right.
Mayor, this time, Madam Mayor, I move to recess in Executive Session 40 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 6:10 PM.
Commissioner, initially, we had a couple items, we just have one. If you want to back that 40 minutes down to 20 or 25, you're best to go with fewer minutes than you might need, you can always come out and get more.
Sure.
Don't tease us like that.
Then why don't I modify my motion, and since it wasn't seconded, I guess, and then say we reconvene here at 5:50, 5:50.
Second? Do we expect any legal action from this?
We would expect no public action on that.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.